Well, then I'm going to go ahead and reconvene the meeting if everybody's ready. Yes?
Yep, ready to go.
Okay. I call the meeting to order. Why don't we do a quick pledge allegiance, if you don't mind? If everyone would join me, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag
To the flag.
of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, into this book with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, roll call, Irene, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Bagby.
Present.
Councilmember Brigham.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Here.
And Mayor Walter.
Here. And how about our student liaisons?
Jennifer Ramirez, Jennifer?
Present.
Thank you. And let's see, it looks like Ms. Summer Lance is excused today.
Okay. All right. Let's report out of the closed session. I'm going to ask our city attorney to report out of the closed session that we just had, but before he does that, I'm going to go ahead and close out of the special city council meeting we had on October the 23rd. And that topic on closed session was public employee performance evaluation. And the report out of that is the city council completed its evaluation of the city manager. The city council is very pleased with David Kelly's performance during his tenure as city manager. Mr. Kelly has done a great job during these difficult times, dealing with fires, a pandemic, the difficult economy, and many other challenges while still moving the city forward and improving the way the city provides services to its residents. And David, you know, as a longtime city council member, I just have to say thank you for the wonderful job that you're doing. And I'll just give my fellow city council members an opportunity to to give you a kudos, thumbs up, if they so wish, but I got to tell you, I'm very pleased with your performance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes?
And I'll chime in here real quickly if I can. David, two years on the council, I'm brand new to the concept, and I think you've done a fantastic job not only moving things forward, but orienting myself as a new council member and ensuring that I always have the information that I need to make an informed decision. And when people have commented to me that I seem prepared on the dais, I only have you to thank for that. So I appreciate the good work you've done.
I'd like to say that I've never seen a city manager walk into the job and get hit repeatedly, time after time after time, with really unprecedented stuff. And you handled it all and didn't go crazy, didn't go running into the forest or anything. So I'm saying good job. We're lucky to have you.
I want to thank you, David, for your support for me in all of the county and state events that I have participated in the last two years. And I really, I'm very thankful for the support to the Latino community, particularly in these times when COVID has hit us so hard and also lack of employment. And, you know, all the initiatives that we've had have benefited the whole community. And I look forward to continue to develop new programs and to continue to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would just add that I think David's done an amazing job at leading our community. He is a true leader. He leads by example. He doesn't expect anybody to do anything that he isn't willing to do himself. And he's actually had most jobs in municipal government or has worked in most areas. And, yeah, I've really gotten a feel for that as, you know, I work on, I've worked on some of the regional boards with some of the other council members, and I've just gotten so much feedback from them and from staff members and how well respected he is in the region and what a great representative for us he is amongst the city managers and other staff members. So, you know, I just want to let him know that he is really appreciated. And, you know, and I appreciate the professionalism and the tone that he sets. And he really has moved us up a notch in the region. So, yeah, his performance is pretty much along those lines. And we just want to let him know how much we do appreciate him and his hard work. And the team that he has assembled around him is another example of his leadership. So, thank you, David.
Thank you, council members. Jose, would you like to report out of this closed session that we just had?
Absolutely. So, Mayor, the council considered a couple items under closed session at today's meeting. For item number one, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, there is a report out. The city council on a unanimous vote authorized the city attorney's office through the law firm of Baron and Bud to initiate litigation against PG&E related to damages from the Kincaid fire, if necessary. And that was on a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Jose. Conflict of interest? Any council members or staff have conflicts of interest on any of the topics for this evening? Okay, seeing no one. Let's move to agenda review. Any changes to the current agenda?
Mayor, no changes to the agenda this evening are proposed by staff.
Well, definitely is a nice light one. So, public comment. Anyone wishing to address the city council on items that do not appear on tonight's agenda may do so. Just raise your hand, give a wave, and Irene will let you in to say a few words. Irene, is there anyone looking to say anything?
No hands are raised at this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to proclamations and presentation acknowledgement of League of California Cities Redwood Empire Division, immediate past president, council member Melanie Bagby. And David, is this your item?
Mayor, thank you. I'd like to introduce this item and introduce our speaker tonight. But before I do so, just a little bit about the League of California Cities. You know, the League of California Cities is an association that the city of Cloverdale is a member of. And under the league, we work together with other city representatives to really enhance the knowledge and skills, exchange information, and collaborate on policy and particularly, you know, best practices for cities. And, you know, one of the key items that comes about when working with the League of California Cities is a common policy platform in representing cities, you know, at the state level. The city of Cloverdale is a member of the Redwood Empire Division. The Redwood Empire Division, you know, includes a lot of our neighbors, neighboring cities to the north, including Arcata and Clear Lake, Crescent City, Eureka, Lakeport, Fortuna, Willets, Ukiah, and Point Arena, to name a few. And we are so lucky to have as our regional affairs manager for the league, Sarah Sanders, who provides a lot of information. I almost get an email, I think, at least one a day, if not more, from Sarah, providing a lot of support and guidance on various policy matters, legislative matters, and matters affecting local government. So I just want to acknowledge the great work that the league is doing in supporting the objectives for the city of Cloverdale and our neighboring cities. We had the fortune to have our council member, Councilmember Bagby, serve as the president of the Redwood Empire and has now since just recently stepped down to be the immediate past president. But we wanted to acknowledge the tremendous work and energy that Councilmember Bagby put into her role as serving as the president for the league and guiding all of our other partner cities and in doing important work and representing us at the state level. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Sarah Sanders. Sarah, if you wanted to just offer a few words, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, David, and thank you so much for your kind words and introduction. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and city staff. I'm Sarah Sanders with the League of California Cities, and I serve as the regional public affairs manager for the Redwood Empire Division. And I join you tonight to recognize and acknowledge Councilmember Melanie Bagby's dedicated service to the Redwood Empire Division. In 2020, Councilmember Bagby not only served as the president of the Redwood Empire Division, but as the division's representative on the Governance Transparency and Labor Relations Policy Committee. For the last two years, she's also been the appointee on the league statewide board, where she helped to spearhead the Rural Cities Information Exchange, which brought the complex issues and needs of rural cities to the forefront of discussion. She's been an excellent representative in all regards, working hard not only to give the city of Cloverdale a statewide voice on policy, but representing all of the Redwood Empire Division cities, from Crescent City to Clear Lake, in a way that was collaborative and thoughtful and productive. Councilmember Bagby served as the steadfast leader that her peers needed during this tumultuous year. Going into 2020, I know that none of us knew what was going to be in store. And as president of the division, she had planned an entire year of educational programming that had to be canceled, completely reimagined and fulfilled. And she has been a decisive, calm, and pragmatic leader, and I cannot thank her enough for that. Under her leadership, the smallest division, our division, within the league held the first virtual division meeting in league history, laying the groundwork and inspiration for the other divisions to move forward and stay connected and problem solve with their colleagues from around the state. And I really look forward to continuing to work with you as the division's immediate past president and to witness your continued policy work to enhance the quality of life for all Californians. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to express my gratitude and acknowledge Councilmember Bagby's contributions and leadership that's continued to advance our division and especially this year. Thank you so much.
Sarah, thank you for those kind words. Councilmember Bagby, is there anything you'd like to say before I open it up to your fellow councilmembers? Okay. Councilmembers, any comments? Well, I have one. I just want to say thank you, Melanie. I know when former councilmember Joe Pollak decided that he wasn't going to run again, I was a little concerned who would step up and take his place. And I was so glad when you did that. And you've been involved with the Redwood Empire Division for a long time, and I really appreciate the representation that you give Cloverdale to the Redwood Empire Division. So, thank you.
I second that. Thank you, Melanie.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please, Marta.
Yes, I want to thank Melanie because she really served as a guide for me within the Empire Division and the Redwood Empire Division and also within the state leadership. And it's been a great learning experience. I can only hope that now that she will have more time, we hope, we can continue to work on what she started with another leader, Bismarck, which is the Rural Cities Group. And she really initiated this, and this is what we need as small cities that do not have to abide by what the big metropolis are doing. And they have been a great voice for us so that we can have our own voice. And that's the most important part of this work, and I thank you for that, Melanie.
I think we lost you, or you lost me.
I don't know where Melanie is.
My internet's been going in and out, so I thank you for your kind words. I only heard probably three quarters of the... And thank you, Sarah, for coming and talking about the league and Cloverdale's involvement. And in the past two years, it's really been an honor to serve as president of the Redwood Division. I look forward to continuing to work. I'm still on the Governance Transparency and Labor Relations Policy Committee, where I bring my unique view, because it's pretty unique compared to everybody else on that committee. And, yeah, and it's been a real honor being on the executive board as well and representing mayors and councilmembers from across the state. So it's been a very educational tier, and I just, yeah, look forward to continuing to work with the folks from the Redwood Division and working with Sarah, because she is an absolute joy and pleasure to work with. So, thanks so much for the privilege. It's been great. So hopefully, other councilmembers will get involved. Joe got me involved, and so hopefully, other councilmembers will be getting involved as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. Thank you, Sarah. All right, let's move on to item number two, which is a presentation on the Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund and the merger with Public Agency Risk Sharing Authority of California to create the California Intergovernmental
I think the mayor might have got kicked off there.
Okay, seems like he's trying to get back on.
Amy, we'll be right there with you. Just a moment, just waiting for the mayor to join us.
Absolutely not a problem. While we wait, let me do a quick sound check. Am I coming through okay?
Your sound sounds great. It's really coming through clearly.
Hey, Mr. Kelly, this is Vice Mayor Turner. I think what I'll do is I'll go ahead and introduce the item and allow the mayor to come back on as long as I have agreement.
Okay, and if I can ask Irene, if you can work with Mayor Walter, he indicated he's locked out. If there's a way to bring him back in. All right, I'm happy to introduce this item. The item tonight is a presentation by Amy Northam. Amy is the general manager of REMIF, which refers to the Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund. REMIF is a risk pool consisting of 15 cities. And we'll list them all here, but we all participate as member cities on the Board of Directors for REMIF. The Board of Directors has been evaluating its own risk and liability and has evaluated merging with another risk sharing entity referred to as PARSAC or the Public Agency Risk Sharing Authority of California. And as with any merger, there's a lot of items to work through to ensure a successful merger. And Amy has been collaborating with PARSAC on addressing the issues, as well as with the executive committee and the Board of Directors for REMIF. Suzy Holmes, our finance director, has served as our primary board representative on the REMIF board. And I currently serve as the alternate. And so with that said, Amy is going to walk you through a presentation, giving you an overview of the proposed merger with PARSAC and some of the follow-up actions that will be required by council in order to enable the successful merger of REMIF and PARSAC. So with that, Amy, I'll go ahead and like to turn that over to you. You want to introduce yourself and proceed with your presentation? Please do.
Absolutely. My name is Amy Northam. I'm the general manager of REMIF, which is the Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund. And I am here tonight to talk about the merger with PARSAC, the Public Agency Risk Sharing Authority of California. It's another JPA very similar to us. And we're merging to create a new JPA, California Intergovernmental Risk Authority, or CIRA. And a quick question for Irene. Do you want me to run the PowerPoint presentation, or are you going to run that on your end?
If you're comfortable, you're welcome to run it. Otherwise, you can walk me through it. I'll leave that at your discretion.
All right, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Excellent, okay. So I thought I'd present the information in kind of a who, what, when, why format. And this is a broad overview, but please don't hesitate to ask any questions. So, who, what is REMIF? Rather than purchase commercial insurance through a commercial insurance carrier, cities often participate in intergovernmental arrangements through which a group of cities and towns, referred to as our members, contribute to a shared fund, pays for liability and workers' comp claims. It also provides risk management services. So what that essentially means is that a bunch of like entities, either typically public entities, it's usually cities or school districts, get together and they pool their money to pay for claims. The pool is often, that fund of money is often referred to as a pool, and our pool is named the Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund, or REMIF. So why would we do this? Local public entities form risk pools to reduce and stabilize long-term insurance costs and to ensure access to the coverage and services needed for critical local government, such as public safety, education, roads and transportation, and more. The purpose of it, public entity pools are fundamentally different from conventional insurance. The primary purpose of any public entity pool is to manage and reduce fine risks to the benefit of our members and to the public at large, since we're talking about public funds. Conventional insurers exist primarily to finance losses and make profit. Public entity pools are collaborating partners that help public entities create, foster, and manage safe environments in order to minimize personal, physical, and property damages as well as losses. So who is REMIF? REMIF is a public entity pool representing 15 small to medium-sized cities and towns, where mostly up and down the 101 corridor. It was formed in 1976 with the mission to provide workers' compensation coverage in response to increasing and unaffordable commercial rates. Coverage was expanded in the mid-1980s to include liability and other services. Other lines of coverage have been added since that time. Who is PARSAC? PARSAC is also a public entity pool. They represent 34 small to medium-sized cities and towns, and they have one fire district. They were formed in 1986 with the mission to provide liability coverage in response to the insurance crisis that eliminated commercial coverage for cities. Coverage was expanded in 1990 to include workers' compensation and other services. And like REMIF, other lines of coverage have been added since that time. There's an incredible amount of similarities between the two pools. Both pools focus on managing and maintaining a financially stable risk-sharing pool for our members. And the Board of Directors for both pools have a conservative funding and investment philosophy. They share a similar philosophy to embrace diverse opinions. They have discussions that are both constructive and collaborative. They encourage participation from our members, and they balance member interests with those of the pool and work together towards a greater good. Some more similarities. Both pools also share a similar culture in that the pool is member-owned, member-governed, member-driven, and exists to serve our members. The organizations are also similar in that they serve small to medium-sized towns. They share a similar footprint in Northern California, although PARSAC does have some presence throughout the state. They have members in Southern California as well. And let me give an example of that. We have Point Arena, I'm sorry, they have Point Arena, we have Willets and Fort Bragg. They have Clear Lake, and we have Lakeport. One important difference is that REMIF has a self-insured health plan, which will be discussed a little more in a few slides. It's an important difference to note. So given the similarities between the two organizations, REMIF and PARSAC explored a strategic partnership. It started that it could have been anything from sharing training resources to a full-blown merger. And it's actually led to that, to a proposed merger between the two organizations. Rather than one pool merging into the other, the Board of Directors has directed the creation of a new pool called CIRA, or the California Intergovernmental Risk Authority. So instead of one merging into the other, we're going to have a third pool called the California, called CIRA, that the two pools will feed into. There'll be great benefits in sharing resources, sharing expenses, and drawing on strengths. Benefits also include succession planning, more robust and stable programs, shared training resources, long-term program sustainability, and eliminating redundancies. And let me give an example of that. For, you know, we're two organizations kind of running in conjunction right now. We're both doing actuarial reports. We're both doing audits. And if we can combine those administrative costs, that would be a good thing for our members. While the merger have realized savings to the members of both pools, the intent is really to have long-term stability and sustainability and to really add both depth and breadth to the agencies. And our singular goal is to better serve our members. So CIRA, after a year of in-depth analysis on such a merger, the Board of Directors for both pools have directed the merger of the organizations effective 7/1 of 21, creating CIRA. To proceed, the individual members, the city of Cloverdale, must seek adoption of the CIRA agreements, which will be presented for adoption at a future council meeting. Council is asked to adopt the CIRA Joint Powers Agreement and the bylaws and further direct staff to work with CIRA on the steps necessary to complete the merger. So again, back to that self-insured health plan, that's a very important difference between us. While the intent is to merge the liability workers' comp and property programs, there's also an interest from the REMIF Board of Directors to have the self-insured health plan remain under the care, custody, and control of REMIF, at least for the time being. So REMIF will continue to exist for purposes of the self-insured health plan only. And, you know, a few years down the line, we may look at moving the self-insured health plan into the CIRA program. Keeping the REMIF health plan separate, this necessitated changes to the underlying joint powers agreement and bylaws. So council is also asked to adopt the REMIF amendments to the REMIF Joint Powers Agreement and bylaws, which will be presented as a consent item on a future agenda. So the fiscal impact, I would guess that's an important question in most councilmembers' minds. The merger will consolidate the operations and expenses of both pools. CIRA will work towards eliminating redundant expenses like that actuarial report and those audits, which will lower long-term operating costs. Consolidating operations will also achieve greater economies of scale, will be larger to purchase, you know, with the law of large numbers, to have better buying power. We will be able to improve service, and CIRA will be in a better position to leverage its larger size for better services, rates, and coverage with service providers and excess insurers. A larger organization will also result in more predictable funding and reserving forecasts, which will reduce the likelihood of future assessments. The merged organization will be more fiscally viable and provide greater long-term stability and sustainability. However, the purpose of the merger is not to reduce costs. We hope that will be a, we hope we will realize costs as a result of it, but that is not the sole purpose and not the primary purpose of the merger. The primary purpose is to provide a more stable and sustainable program. The primary purpose is to provide a more stable and sustainable program. Is there any questions?
Amy, if you can, could you address the issue? I think it's important of spreading risk and why, you know, creating a larger organization, as you outlined in your presentation, may help to spread risk.
Absolutely, so it's the law of large numbers. If we have a larger base, and let's say, because we will have approximately 50 cities after this merger. And if one or two of the cities in a size of 15 cities, if one or two have catastrophic losses, it really affects the pool, because the pool is much smaller. But with the law of large numbers, if we spread that risk out over a larger base, it will provide some stability to the losses.
Got it, thank you.
Absolutely. And, you know, it's weighing, because we don't want to be too large and we don't want to be too small. We got to find where that sweet spot is. And one advantage with the CERA organization versus much larger JPAs is that all of the members will have a vote at the table. So right now, all of the REMIF members have a vote at the table. Everyone has an equal vote. That will be the same with CERA. Every member of CERA will have an equal vote at the table. And that's an important distinction from, you know, from an insurance company or anybody else, because the members will make decisions about what happens at CERA.
And Amy, as a follow-up question, again, I'm asking these questions for the council's benefit. You know, the self-insured medical coverage is kind of unique in a lot of regards. Maybe just a few words about our self-insured medical program.
Okay, absolutely. So the self-insured medical program is actually a very healthy program, pun intended. It's very fiscally healthy. It was created in 2015. We used to have a fully insured program, which means we used to write checks to the insurance company and have our health coverage through that. And the rates kept going up and up, and we felt like we had no control over the program itself. So we decided to turn that into a self-insured plan. So REMIF hosts a self-funded health plan. It covers both medical, dental, and vision. And so we, similar to gather funds from all the members to pay for claims, we gather premiums or contributions, is actually what the term is in our world. We gather those contributions from our members and use those funds to pay medical claims. And it helps, in a few ways, it helps. So far, it's kept costs down, although we did have an increase in costs this year for the first time, a fairly substantial increase in costs for the first time in a few years. But it also allows the REMIF members to have control over the program.
Thank you.
Can I comment on that just a little bit further? So you say you saw a marked increase this year that typically can stem if you have a rather unhealthy year amongst your membership coverage. Do you see self-funding being something that while the long game is beneficial during COVID, it might have kind of spikes that will even themselves out over a longer period of time as hopefully the need for the medical coverage goes down in subsequent years?
Yeah, absolutely. That's, you worded it perfectly. That's what we're hoping is that over the long term, it will be, continue to be a sustainable program. It's running great right now, but it's all based on our claims, on our claims, on the REMIF claims. So the claims that are happening from the REMIF employees, I'm sorry, from the employees of the REMIF members are really what direct those costs. So oddly enough, even though we did have, you know, a decrease in care that was received because of COVID, some of our high-dollar claims still continued. And there was no dip in prescription coverage for those months during COVID, which makes sense. They were, you know, people were still able to continue to get their meds. But we did not see, we definitely saw a dip in medical claims throughout the months of COVID. And we're not quite sure if that will be, you know, when things start to open back up again, if those claim increases, if those claims will continue to rise, if they will spike again, because people will be able to get in to see the doctor when they haven't before. So we're just kind of crossing our fingers and waiting to see that one out.
Yeah, thank you. Council members, I'm going to go ahead and finish this item out for our mayor and then hand it back over to him. Any other questions for Amy, staff? Any questions that you'd like to see asked this time?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions.
Melanie, please.
Yeah, and I apologize, Amy, if I'm, and I'm getting a terrible echo right now. Is everybody muted?
You sound fine, Melanie.
Yeah, I'm getting the echo. Okay, I'll try to keep it straight in my brain as I hear myself. And I've been having connection problems all night, Amy. So if I ask a question that you answered in your presentation, I apologize. If we could just take a look at page three of four, and I think it's nine in our packet. I just had a couple of questions. If you could talk about the grants item that we're not getting right now and the operational best practices templates that we're not getting now. And just sort of describe what those are.
Absolutely, and I apologize. I do not have a copy of the packet in front of me, but I can speak more generally and hopefully this addresses the questions that you had.
Yeah, we just had checkboxes and a no mark. And right now, under REMIF, we don't have the grants that ParsAC offers and we don't have operational best practices templates.
Got it, thank you for that clarification. That's very helpful. I know exactly to what you're referring. So yeah, so there, we are very, very similar, but there's absolutely some differences between us. As I mentioned, you know, on the REMIF side, we have the self-insured health plan. But on the ParsAC side, they have a little bit stronger loss control services than we do. They have a phenomenal risk manager that works for ParsAC. He used to work for this little company called Google and now works for ParsAC. So that would be a phenomenal, phenomenal resource for our members. And so for the operational best practices, that would be something that we would be able to tap into and provide those offerings to our members. It's something we can actually tap into now, just because we're in the middle of speaking with them about a merger. So they have opened that up to us. And the grant item, what they do is they offer $5,000 per program. So if you're in their liability program and if you're in their workers' comp program, you have $10,000 available to the city for a grant. And those grant funds are very, you can apply for them. And they're very generous and liberal with providing grant money. So some cities have used grant money to bring in sidewalk repair. Some have brought in, have used them for additional safety cameras. So it's pretty broad. And that's one of the things we're going to talk to our transition committee about is continuing that grant program and opening it up to the REMIF members.
Let me make sure Melanie's still here. She might have got kicked off when you were offering your explanation there, but it has been recorded.
Okay.
So she can definitely see it. But I just want to give her a quick moment to see if maybe she has a follow-up or anything like that. I apologize for the connection issues. In the meantime, Marta, it looks like you might have a question or comment. You want to go ahead?
Yes, Amy, I would like to know if the grants could be for a larger amount of money and what would be the conditions?
That's a great question. So that is something we could definitely talk to the transition committee about. And let me explain what the transition committee is. So when we started talking about this merger, we pulled some members of REMIF, it was actually our executive committee, and some members from ParsAC together. And they meet fairly often. We meet with them approximately once every month to once every six weeks to talk about issues with the merger. Because there's a lot of them, there's a lot of things to talk about. Melanie just put a note into chat that says I will re-watch her answer. And so, yes, we could ask for more money. You know, and it's one of those weighing games. Because for us to give money back out for grants, we actually have to collect more money from our members. So it would be a decision from our boards, really, if they, how they want that grant program funded and how much each grant would be. Absolutely.
Does that answer your question? Okay, Marta? Wonderful, all right. Any other questions from staff or council for Amy? Oop, I very much so hit the wrong button there. Let's see here, here we are. All right, not seeing anyone wave at me just now. Amy, allow me to take this time to really thank you for that presentation. We do appreciate the details for REMIF and the merger and how it can help mitigate our risks and limit our liabilities as a city moving forward. So thank you for taking the time to give us those details. If there's anything you need, please feel free to reach out to our city manager. And we look forward to working with you.
Great, thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Turner just wanted to report that Mayor Walter is back in the Zoom meeting.
Wonderful, allow me to turn the meeting back over to our mayor. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Turner. I appreciate your taking over. I've relocated from the council chambers to the conference room, so I'm much closer to the server. So hopefully, I'll stay on this time. Amy, thank you. I'll also watch your presentation on the rewind. But thank you for coming and sharing with us this evening.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. All right, let's move to the next item, which is our student liaison report. Jennifer, I believe that would be you. And you could just unmute yourself and let us know what's happening over at the high school.
Thank you, Mayor. Regards to all council members. From my point, sports such as soccer, volleyball, cross-country, and football are still doing the same conditioning as before. The schools you're opening many has started to develop plans for a hybrid plan for the school, but nothing is set yet. Our school is doing a spare week to dress up according to different days.
Oops. We seem to be losing you, at least I am.
Jennifer, if you can hear me, maybe you can cut your video. That might help with.
Oh, okay. You start over.
Yeah, we couldn't hear you, Jennifer.
Okay, I'll start over.
Okay.
Regards to all council members. From my report, sports such as soccer, volleyball, cross-country, and football are still doing the same conditioning as before. The schools you're opening committee has started to develop plans for a hybrid plan for the school, but nothing is set yet. Our school is doing a spare week to dress up according to different days, such as wearing a plaid shirt with pink or crazy hair day. Moreover, we also have a new teacher. She is the new culinary teacher. We also have a lot of new programs, such as study groups and stress groups to help students in this new distance learning time. Lastly, Claroire High School is just waiting until the COVID cases are not in the purple tier to move on towards a hybrid plan of combining online and in-person teaching. That will be all. Turn mute.
Sorry, Jennifer, thank you. Council members, are there any questions? Okay, well, thank you again, Jennifer. And we'll move on to the next, which is the Consent Calendar. All items on the Consent Calendar will be considered together by one action unless any council member of the public wishes to have an item pulled and discussed separately. Any items to be pulled, council members?
Nope.
Irene, is there anyone in the waiting room to pull an item by chance?
No hands are raised, Mayor.
Okay, then if I could have a motion.
I can move approval.
I will second.
Can we have a roll call, please, Irene?
Yes. Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham.
Aye.
And Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is Communications. Councilmember Cruz, I know I received your report today. Is there any other reports, Irene, that we didn't receive?
And then Councilmember Bagby's report was also sent out.
Okay, thank you. There are no public hearing items. There's no new business. And there are subcommittee items, subcommittee reports. Can we start with the Finance Administration and please?
Yes, our next meeting is December 1st at 1:00 PM. We'll be receiving an update on St. Joseph Health and Self-Hailing Communities and an update on COVID-19 opening and recovery. There may be somebody, there may be a representative from Health Action on the Self-Hailing Communities in the audience who wants to address that.
Okay.
Do we hear, do we have anybody, Irene?
We do. Let's see, I don't know if it's Becky.
I am out here, yes, thank you.
Perfect.
Good evening, council, thank you so much. I just wanted to quickly recap. You know, Melanie, Councilmember Melanie and I had been trying to get her onto the ACE's webinar that happened on October 15th. And I'm sorry, due to some technical difficulties with the Eventbrite link, she was not able to participate. But also Jen Mendoza from Supervisor Gore's office, Debbie Howell from Alexander Valley Health will have been able to see and view the webinar. And so I'm hoping to just be able to continue to support the subcommittee and provide briefing materials and to be able to continue to update the council on this policy framework. I just sent Councilmember Bagby an email about the, just some notes from my webinar in that time and really looking at the science behind this and utilizing the near science, as we like to call it, the neuroepigenetics, adverse childhood experiences, and leading our policy and framing our policy work. So I appreciate this opportunity. And in the transition of stepping back from facilitator of Health Action and passing that over to Amanda, I think again, it just helps me present clearly that I'm coming to the council as a resource and no longer, hopefully, no one's seeing me as stepping from the council and asking for money anymore. This is really my pursuit and my passion to help with this idea of resiliency and the self-healing community model. So thank you.
Oh, thank you, Becky. And yeah, I was not able to get into the webinar. Apparently, today and for a couple of days, technical issues have been following me. So, but I do look forward to actually.
Glad you do.
Being, yeah, I look forward to be able to get in and review the webinar. But I was able to get in and view the PowerPoint stack. And I think that there are, it's an incredibly valuable resource for us as leaders in the council, in City Hall, to use moving forward, especially as we try to, you know, deal with and cope with and move out of COVID-19. So I look forward to diving into it deeper and hoping that it can be, you know, part of the framework that we use to discuss, you know, the issues that we're experiencing personally and professionally and helping the community move forward. I think it'll be especially valuable to bring this to resilient Cloverdale as well. So yeah, I look forward to being able to use it as a framework and having other council members and staff participate. So thanks, Becky, for turning us on to this. And hopefully, it's something that we can use going forward.
Thanks, Melanie. I definitely think I
Thanks, Melanie, I definitely think it dovetails well into what City Manager Kelly has been doing with the Resilient Cloverdale group as well.
Yeah, I agree.
And I wanted to mention that there was a conflict for some of the usual participants in the local Health Action meeting on the 20th. And we did receive a short briefing from, I forget her name right now, but.
Monse?
Yes. And it was, it was another good explanation of the program. And I do agree that it is something that all of us should be aware of. And perhaps it should be brought back to the agenda when all of us can be there again. Because some of us were, had conflict with another program. But thank you, Becky, for your leadership in this area.
Yeah, and thank you for getting that posted so that we can go back and we watch it as needed. So hopefully that resource will be available online for a while. We can, we can all catch up and get on the same page again.
Yeah, absolutely, and I'm more than happy to, you know, come back and kind of tweak things specifically to Cloverdale. That was a general Sonoma County type overview from Laura Porter and the work that she was doing and trying to connect the dots between not just recovery from, you know, disaster, but also, you know, progressing forward and looking at having initiatives that are, you know, affecting and supporting dual generations. So not just our current generation, but our children and really looking long term for each community within Sonoma County. So I'd be happy to tweak it as well.
Becky, thank you. Councilmember Bagby, thank you. Councilmembers, are there any other questions on the Finance Admin and Police Subcommittee?
Mayor Walter and Councilmember Bagby, if I can, just briefly, also just speak to one other important item that was on the Finance Admin and Police Subcommittee that we'll be bringing back for further discussion and ultimately bringing to council is a report that was prepared by Management Partners. Management Partners prepared the long-term financial forecast for the city that was previously presented to the City Council. We asked them to do a more specific analysis on the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on the city's budget. And they did perform a pretty deep dive and analysis of our revenues and evaluated the economic impacts from COVID. And that was, the results were presented to the Subcommittee at their last meeting in October. In addition to the analysis that was performed, Management Partners also developed and provided a list of specific budget strategies that really kind of were developed, what I'll call along a continuum that looked at possibility of expenditure controls or cost shifts, service delivery changes, as well as revenue enhancement opportunities. I encourage all of you as council members to take a look at that study. It's a, it was a fairly extensive analysis that was done. And there's a lot that was covered in the memo. Ultimately, that will be coming back to council as part of our workshop to discuss, you know, some of those strategies. So I just wanted to, I don't want council to be surprised. You know, it's a fairly analytical analysis and has a number of policy implications should council decide to further consider some of the strategies. But there's a lot of pros and cons, really asking to kind of, you know, look at our budget from an in-depth perspective and, you know, leave nothing uncovered. And I think, I think they did that. There's certainly more work that can be done, but ultimately, again, we'll bring this back to council for further review and discussion. And I think the direction would be, you know, bring it back sometime maybe in January as a preliminary review prior to beginning the next year's budget process. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Bagby.
Thank you, David. Okay, next is Planning and Sustainability, and we meet next on the 15th at 4 o'clock. How about, Marian, did you have anything to add to that? I think you're on that committee with me.
I am, but no, there are no real updates.
Okay. How about the Public Works Subcommittee? Councilmember Cruz, I believe that's yours.
Yes, it is. We have to follow up with Mr. Albi regarding a situation that we have been addressing for a while with the local shuttle. But other than that, we will meet in November. Well, I don't know if we're going to meet because I think we're going to be canceling that one, is right? Thanksgiving, just like the other council meeting. But so far, the 24th. And then I'll just go ahead and also report on the Joint City School. We will not have any meetings until January because the team is working hard at coming up with a hybrid program for our school. However, everything is pending and we will be meeting if necessary prior to that. So far, the problems with Wi-Fi access have been addressed and we haven't had any more complaints. We do welcome people to bring awareness to the school if there are any problems in accessing, just like we have today. And we're just very concerned and on top to make sure that students have access to appropriate teaching and learning experience.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. How about the Joint City Fire District Subcommittee?
Our next meeting is February the 8th at 5:00.
Okay. And lastly, is the Homeless Community Advisory Group, and hopefully we'll be meeting shortly. I believe Supervisor Gore committed to a meeting in November of the Fourth District Group, and we usually piggyback after that meeting. Okay, how about informational report, legislative reports, letters, support, City Manager, City Attorney reports? David, anything?
Your reports, Mayor, I do have a brief status update on the current emergency related to COVID-19 when council is ready.
Okay. Jose, if there's no legislative reports or City Attorney reports, David, I think we're ready.
Okay, two things I'd like to share with council. First is we've coordinated with Sonoma County Department of Public Health on a pop-up testing site at the Cloverdale Plaza. Just prior to the meeting, we received notification that they will have a pop-up testing site on the plaza starting tomorrow. I think the preliminary timeframe that it indicated is 8:30 to 5:00. So you will see county health with a table out on the plaza, you know, conducting pop-up testing for COVID-19. And that's part of the, you know, the county's strategy is to roll out more testing and pop-up centers to, you know, facilitate access to testing, you know, within, all around Sonoma County. But this particular pop-up is obviously targeting City of Cloverdale and our surrounding incorporated area. So you should see county, county staff members out there with the, you know, table and providing pop-up testing. The other announcement is, again, continuing with the county's effort to provide, you know, additional resources to addressing the COVID-19 pandemic is in regards to what's referred to as the CURA project or PURA project. It's a collaboration amongst community-based organizations, really to, you know, target and address and connect, you know, our Latinx and our indigenous populations to get COVID-19 testing, to healthcare, to alternate care sites, as well as, you know, food and financial resources. We received the contact information today and I pushed that out to the Resilient Cloverdale leadership team and copied to council. I think this is, you know, they're gonna, again, it's another resource that's available for our community members. And I wanted to announce it because I think it's, you know, could provide important financial resources as well as educational information to our community members that are so important for addressing COVID-19 in our community. So that's the end of the report, Mayor, I'm happy to address anything else in terms of questions council may have about staff's work addressing the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, David. Who's your little friend there?
That was my kitty cat Charlie who wanted to intercede in this council discussion.
Well, next time you have to let him say hello. Councilmember Cruz, you had a question?
Yes, David, could you clarify what is the requirement to get financial assistance? Because I didn't quite understand if it meant that people had to be pretty much without any income to receive any, to apply for any of this financial assistance through CURA.
Well, my understanding is that there is some criteria for the financial assistance. I understand that you have to be either in isolation or quarantine, that you may also be subject to losing your job or salary due to being placed in isolation or quarantine. Again, not all employers are providing, you know, healthcare or leave. And I think this was, you know, a tool, so what ends up being the situation, I think, is some positive individuals otherwise go to work because it's their only means of livelihood. So the strategy was to provide financial resources to help address that, the impact on their household's financial resources. But, you know, the individuals are encouraged to connect directly with CURA and, you know, file their request and they're the county's designated authority to, you know, provide the financial resources, which I understand is approximately $1,200 a month. But they are the ones that have developed the specific criteria about whether a family member or a household qualifies for that assistance.
Thank you, David. Any other questions, council members? Okay, how about future agenda items? Councilmember Cruz?
I am not certain if we are already in schedule or not, but I think I mentioned it before also, to have a presentation by 10,000 Degrees, a scholarship program that works with this school system here. And we have about 22 students from Cloverdale. And I would like to make sure that the community gets to know some of these students who are definitely an example and definitely a role model for our students in general.
You know, Councilmember Cruz, I don't have a problem putting that on the agenda. You know, I just wish the school board would put it on their agenda as well. It seems that we're heavy lifting on this one. So I'll arrange with the City Manager and Irene to get that on the schedule before the end of the year.
Yeah, the reason I'm really requesting this is because it's a time-sensitive application process. And given that kids are no longer able to interact with counselors and teachers, it might take a little longer for them to get an appointment, to talk to the counselors, to get more advice, to get letters of recommendation, to get all the paperwork in order and so on. And most of the time, you know, students tend to be a little bit aloof about applications. And we want to make sure that they have plenty of time to do this and to apply because it's a very good program because it goes all the way from high school through college and graduation, either straight school, two-year college or four-year college. So I know that we have many things, but at the same time, we need to promote it as much as possible through all our means. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. I was impressed with the number of students that have taken advantage of that program and the fact that we had an individual in Cloverdale who contributed so much financially to it. So yeah, I'd like to share that with the community as well. Any other future agenda items? Well, seeing none, I'm going to take this opportunity to thank staff. Irene, thank you. And we're going to go ahead, if there's nothing else, and adjourn the meeting. And the next meeting will be November the 11th at, well, we say 5:00 PM. But let's remember that November 11th meeting is a public hearing and we're going to be discussing the new proposed water rate and sewer rate increases. So bring your pajamas, it might be a late meeting, okay? All right, meeting adjourned, thank you, thank you folks, thank you, Irene.
Thank you, have a good one.
Thank you, good night.
Good night, everyone.